I was in the Times Union recently about Stuart's share.
What program?
It was their ESOP program.
Their ESOP program.
Retirement program.
The retirement program. Very interesting article about what Stuart does for a community. Resolutions. First resolution is appointing the Commissioner of Deeds. That's Shmerhorn and Donald Moore. Do I have a first and a second?
I'll have a copy of that. I'll have a copy.
Do I have a first, Rob? And a second? The second is a resolution setting policy with regard to de minimis voluntary payments to the City of Hudson. In a nutshell, this is about people who overpay and it makes it easier for the city to deal with that. Rob, do you want to add anything on that?
Yes, so this is for any type of city fees that somebody may pay with cash or something. It excludes property taxes and it excludes violations. So it could be a city fee where somebody sent in $20 and it was an $18 fee and it cost the city so much money to kind of return the difference between that. So this allows after 30 days for de minimis payments up to $50 to be accepted as a voluntary payment to the city. And it doesn't have to be kind of allocated and managed and end up costing more than what the fee was to begin with.
And is the grant keeping the challenge?
Yes, exactly. Exactly, we consider the grant keeping the challenge.
Which is particularly true when the tickets were eight. What meant if you would submit $10 and it would end up costing more money to the funding if they don't pay. But that will be changing soon too. Do I have a first? Tiffany, and a second? Next, we're accepting a $100 donation from, it looks like the New York State Collection Officers PBA. They're donating $100 to the Polar Plunge. A first? Rob, and a second? Thirdly.
I have a question.
Sure. On which donation? Next resolution. A resolution authorizing a loan from the General Fund to the Sewer Fund for the Front Street Stormwater Separation Project. I don't think this, it will be paid back to the Sewer Fund as soon as the Treasury Office determines that sufficient grant reimbursements have been received. So this is just a temporary loan until the reimbursement comes in. Is that correct? Heather?
That is correct. Eileen had asked earlier, written before the meeting started, about what the situation was, was cash. They actually have a fair amount of cash, about $175,000. But the project is expected to be finished in about eight weeks and probably coming out of pocket closer to $600 or $700. So this seems like adequate enough money that we'll be able to pay the bills while we're waiting for reimbursement. As soon as we get the reimbursement, General Fund will get the cash back from Sewer.
Will we know how long until the reimbursement?
We do not. That's part of the challenge. I know for certain things like the CHIPS money, it can come in a year later. I'm hoping the reimbursement for this will be quicker than that.
It can be longer than a year.
It can be, hopefully it won't be.
Do I have a first? And a second? The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a retainer agreement for Labor Law Council. I believe this was to complete the work involved with the collective bargaining that took place with the Hudson City Police. An introduction? Oh, sorry.
Can you explain that a little bit more?
In order to, we were in negotiation with the HPD and we had a lawyer outside of the city attorney consulting on it because Andy's not a labor lawyer. And we're just finishing paying for their services.
Yeah, so they negotiated the collective bargaining agreement and that included memorializing what agreement had between the city and the police department and the same attorney who negotiated that to prepare to finish it. There's not a significant amount of work that's necessary. However, the retainer agreement that was with Minn Gold expired at the end of 2017. So we need to just renew that so that she can complete the project. Because she was involved all the way through, if we want to have her review the final agreement, she was involved in all the negotiations.
And then the fee involved from the new one?
It's an hourly retainer fee that she would be paid, the standard rate that she was paid before.
Do I have an introduction? Rob, and a second? Okay. Now this resolution, it'll take a little bit of time here. It's a resolution adopting revised boundaries for the historic district. I'll read the whole resolution. Whereas on January 12, 2018, the Hudson Preservation Commission recommended to the common council that the boundaries of the historic district within the City of Hudson be revised pursuant to the resolution annexed here to, that's exhibit A. Whereas the force of recommendation by the HPC was ready following the requisite public hearing in accordance with provisions of the Hudson City Code. Whereas the common council finds it is in the best interest of the city to revise the boundaries of the historic district in accordance with the recommendations of the HPC. Be resolved if the common council hereby adopts revised boundary lines of the historic district within the City of Hudson and sets forth on the attached map annexed here to, as exhibit B. Be it further resolved that HPC is directed to provide the requisite notice of revised boundaries as set forth in Hudson City Code. As you see from the supporting documents, HPC has done what I think is an excellent job of notifying everybody on, you look at page four. You see all the property, there aren't that many property owners within this boundary. If you want a quick definition, it's pretty much everything south of Allen Street to the, to Power Avenue, which doesn't really exist anymore. That's the south side of the L and B factory. And it's my understanding that all property owners and residents in that district were notified or at the proper public hearing. Foreman, would you like to contribute any more to that description?
I don't drop anything.
You're the chair of this discussion.
I'm chair of the HPC, I'm Phil Foreman. We have worked on this for an extended period of time because it was pretty clear that the, there were inconsistencies, for starters, in the meets and bounds description. There are actually two boundaries that are listed in the documents that are supposed to be enforced. You have both Amtrak as a boundary, you have the Hudson River as a boundary in the same sentence. They're not the same thing. And an incomplete description of the southern boundary, which is Power Avenue up near the courthouse, but also Power Avenue down to the south of the L and B. The problem has existed, I'm sad to say, for over 10 years. Most of the chairs or all of the past chairs until Rick became chairman of the HPC have not really taken it on. It was clear from both our understanding of what had happened in the past and the complications going forward from a code enforcement point of view that it was about time to make the corrections. So that's essentially what we've done. I can answer questions if you would take me through any of these exhibits.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Foreman? I agree?
Will this have impact on the projects that are proposed and may happen down there? 14 and 17 from the tax ID numbers, I think that those are the CAS properties.
So if you go to exhibit B, I'm not going to pretend to be perfectly clear on all of the boundaries. But these are the folks who we contacted from tax rolls that would fall within that. So for example, we do impact on those addresses on Montgomery Street, South Third Street, Cross Street, South Front Street, South Second Street, Sanders Lane, Deer Alley, Power Avenue, Hudson Avenue, down to the waterfront. We had estimated, the tax map process is not always perfect because sometimes there are different owners or multiple properties under the same owner. But we put out, give or take, about 42 first-class letters to each of the owners that we could identify. And we did host a public hearing and heard some useful public comments on what we're doing. I'm not good enough at the map to try to respond to any specific property. But if it's listed in your exhibit there, then it would be impacted.
My understanding is the answer is yes. Does, the owners right now are HPC. And yes, it would impact how that property is developed. But remember, it would be new constructions, a totally different, you know, bunch of rules rather than existing structure. Although there probably have to be, the former chair of the HPC might know, would there have to be a hearing about tearing down the CAS?
There's already been partial demolition without approval because it's not in the district at this point. So future demolitions probably, but they would be here.
Counsel, any other questions for Tiffany?
So when you contacted people that own these properties, what was their reaction about being a part of this new boundary?
We had, I don't know how many people were actually in the public hearing representing the properties. There were two that spoke. One person spoke positively that this would, they were homeowner in one of the streets affected, that this would have a positive impact on the street and give them some protection going forward. There also was a property owner who had a, some kind of factory or a small factory down near the waterfront, who was concerned that this would constrain his freedom should he choose to demolish his facility and trade up or do whatever he wished to do. And those were the two comments and that's about what we had in terms of people that spoke at the meeting.
Well, what about the people that you contacted by phone? How did they feel?
We contacted everybody by mail.
Did they respond?
Just the folks who showed up before the public hearing.
Tiffany, I got three emails from residents in the first quarter and I asked them all to come to the meeting and they all came. I didn't hear from everybody.
Were they for or against?
There were two for and then the one that was against became a little more ambivalent about the situation.
Would this increase the taxes for these individuals if they was to be a part of the historic district?
It has no impact that I'm aware of on anything to do with taxes. Our purview is the exterior of the buildings. People can use it in any way they wish. We have no purview over any of that. What it would impact or potentially could impact would be if someone wanted to demolish one of the structures or radically alter it so it ended up looking like a different structure. That we would definitely weigh in on.
Thank you. I just, I understand, I have a public hearing and three people attended and it's a lot of different addresses here. So I was just curious, you know, how the rest do?
No, understood. I think you'll see from the addresses that a lot of folks own stuff there at the D who are not necessarily in Hudson. We would be, I wish more people to come.
And to follow up, because I know what you're saying. There was an attempt a few years back to include Robinson Street. And the reason I raised it is people were concerned, in some cases correctly, in other cases not correctly, about what the Preservation Commission could impose on them. Is there something, like some talking points you could send to us? Because there are a few folks that I would contact here and I wouldn't be able to do the conversation just as if they say, well, but that means I can't paint my house or change the barn.
Of course. I mean, just real quickly and tell me when to stop. We see between 15 and 75 projects a year and that's been true for a while now. We're probably, in respect of dealing with the public on an individual homeowner basis, I think the busiest commission in the city in terms of quote-unquote turning down applications, if you will. I would say that is no more than one or two a year. And it's unusual because the intent of the commission is to walk people through the process and help them get it done, consistent with the city code. We don't, or I won't say never, almost never, opine on paint. We don't or almost never opine on repair projects that are straight up fix and replace. We don't reach out and bother people with our views. The way people come to the Preservation Commission is through code enforcement. They've come in for a building permit. Craig identifies whether or not that property is in a historic district and Craig identifies whether or not the extent of the work that they're looking to achieve makes it appropriate for them to come before the commission. They then come in, fill out forms, present their project and something like 99 times out of 100, there is a way forward. Most people are coming in for fixing their windows, fixing a porch, a new door, changing from some old aluminum or vinyl siding that they don't want anymore to see what's underneath, see if there's a wood siding that's usable and so on. It can get more complicated, but that's straight most of what we do.
Rich, did you just know?
Yeah, and apologies if it's in there, I haven't read it fully all of that. But what actually, how do you define what is in the historic district? In terms of like, why wouldn't Robinson Street or parts of State Street be its own district? Or how is that defined?
We're moving forward, we're basically working off what was put on the table and considered around 2006 when the initial proposition to have historic districts was put in place. This is a correction of an existing district, as I understand it. And I wasn't around then, there are folks who might have been. The first thought was that these were the oldest bits of Hudson. And that's how it came to pass that there was a Union Allen, South Front Street District and a Warren Street District and so on. I'm not going to try to comment on the future because it's not really what we're talking about. But that was the notion and that's still true with the Union Allen, South Street extension and correction that we're talking about. It remains, if not the oldest, close to the oldest part of Hudson. Which simply means that within that, there's a very distinct pattern of types of buildings, industrial buildings, residential buildings, that are from the past and add to the history of the city.
Tiffany, did you have any other questions?
Yes. When you have these cases that come before you and people that own these properties in the historic district that want to change the doors or the windows, how many are actually granted or denied?
I would say almost all are granted. Which is not to say that there's not a conversation. I mean, we ask people and they almost always agree to, rather than pulling out existing windows and going belows to at least see if there's a repair with the existing windows or whatever the material is. We ask people to consider if it was a wood house, to stay a wood house. On the other hand, there are probably at least a dozen houses where we've approved a party plant or other synthetic materials because there may have been an issue with affordability or some other issue. But virtually every application that comes to us is approved. I can only think in the last year of two that were not.
What would you say roughly, not in figures, but another concern? We mentioned windows back during the Robinson Street discussion was about the higher cost for what you described, finding someone who could repair the windows and the cost of that versus the cost of buying new wherever they would buy it. So the doors was one thing. In your experience, is it, I don't even know how we would judge it, what might be a lot to me might not be a lot to someone else. But is there a range of difference that the group would consider? Difference that the group would consider too much to impose or?
What we look at without addressing costs, because it's kind of not our purview, but it's not as if we're not aware of what stuff costs. Everyone on the commission has to be a homeowner in Hudson and so on. What I'd say is that the big guns with the good stuff, the Andersons and the Pelles and those folks, have finally come to terms with what people need in terms of wooden windows. We've accepted, for example, windows with exterior cladding. We are accepting and do accept windows with insulated glass, which was very hard to do a while back because the divides, the muttons, were about three times wider and thicker than anything that would be on a 19th century or even early 20th century building. That has changed. Those products are now available with an appropriate mutton and in fact with insulated glass. So the technology has caught up. I'm sure that there is a differential between going to the lowest cost provider and putting in a replacement window, from what we're asking people to consider. But I've been on the commission for six years and for the most part, it hasn't been a problem. When there is a problem and someone feels that they can't find a vendor solution, I don't know if I should say this or not, I will say it, that Craig actually helps them find somebody.
And is Sanders Lane included in this? I didn't see, it is.
What, what was that question?
Sanders Lane.
Okay. Do I have an introduction and a second? An introduction?
Question. What's the benefit of changing historic district?
Of changing?
Yeah.
I'm not thinking that that's exactly what we're doing. What we're, the way this error or actually the several errors occurred is that the description of the Union Allen, South Front Street historic district was not contained actually in the city code except as a reference to the memorandum. It said, if you want more specific definition of the boundaries, please refer to the memorandum. The memorandum has contradictory meets and bounds in it and that was never fixed. So whatever we do going forward, we actually have to have one set of meets and bounds and one map to work with or there's no way to enforce even the existing district. The reason for the larger district goes back to what the process was when the district was created. There was a task force composed, I don't remember all the folks, but I'd say David Voorhees, Mary Handback and a few others, who were asked by the then-chair of the Preservation Commission to prepare a recommendation for the district. We've talked to as many of those folks who are still around and the recommendation that they brought to the common council and that was presumably approved included what we are currently describing. That is, the Union Allen, South Front Street historic district in that recommendation extended to the Hudson River and the southernmost border was Power Avenue, both sections as we described. Somehow that got lost in translation when the documents were put into the, whatever the ultimate binder that became 169. So from my perspective, we're correcting something that should have been corrected a long time ago. In terms of benefit, we are limited, like all the other commissions. We only hear issues that are brought to us by code enforcement, which means if there's a project or a demolition being proposed. The implication of that is that it's not impossible, but it would be more difficult to go down to the waterfront or any of the beautiful warehouses or historic buildings and tear them down.
Okay. Do I have an introduction?
Thank you.
Rob, do I have a second? My recommendations before our formal meeting. You might bring in more of the people who are listed as residents in the neighborhood who might speak for it, since support seems to be wavering here. Let's just recommend, you don't have to do it if you don't want it. Let's just recommend, you don't have to do it if you don't want it.
I would agree with you.
We'll do that.
Thank you. Not just the three that attended, the others.
I understand.
Next, a resolution approving the 2017 501 listing pursuant to the service award program. You may recall that each year we have to list who's earned enough service to participate in the very modest retirement plan. Is that right Heather? Is that what this is?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have an introduction? Tiffany and a second? Next, we have a resolution increasing the fee to be charged for removal of a motor vehicle boot. Let me say that it's recommended, I won't read the whole thing, that the Police Committee has recommended that motor vehicle boot remove fee be increased from $110 to $150. I asked the chief to provide further explanation of this, and what I received was, "The increase can be substantiated as an increase due to the cost of management enforcement." Pursuing that further, I was told, "We have a full staffing for parking enforcement agents, unlike we had before. We have a contract with Complus, who issue the handheld devices, and the HPD will handle the appropriate administration verification on their end to dispatch towing services." It's not quite what I was asking for, but it's up to you whether you want to move this forward. Tiffany?
If the removal fee right now is $110.
Correct.
What is the increased fee if that wasn't taken care of within those 45 days? Does it remain $110 or does it go up?
You mean, no, this is a resolution to move it up.
I understand this resolution is to increase it to $150, but I'm asking.
Can they do without this?
Without, right now it's $110. So if someone was to get booted right now, and they couldn't afford to pay that $110 upfront, and they had to do payment, does that fee increase over a certain amount of time or does it remain $110? For the month or the year?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
I think this happened prior to January. I believe this happened prior to January. I don't, this wasn't on the Police Committee this year. And I think it goes to me, like if that doesn't get paid, I believe it goes to towing, but I don't have the background to it because it happened in the previous council.
I would like to make a motion to table dispatch to the Police Committee since.
Do I have a second? Sherisha? All in favor? Say aye. Okay, we'll table this till next meeting. Excuse me. Next resolution authorizes transfer of funds for youth programs through December 31st, 2017. This is just catching up with last year's invoices, you see the amounts. I don't know if there's anything further we need to know unless you have a question, any council member? Ireland?
Insufficient funds for 2017.
Correct.
To .1 account? Did folks get paid?
They did.
They did, okay.
Any other questions to the council? An introduction? Tiffany? A second? Okay, the last piece of business, oh, I should say, we still have those proposed local laws sitting on our desks. One has been referred to the Legal Committee. That's one about dwelling units and amendment to zoning. The veterans exemption on real property taxes, perhaps we might vote on that at our next regular meeting. Right now, a new. Local law. You have them from previous, that's local law number nine and number two. And what we have on our desk tonight is local law number three. It's a simple amendment to raise the parking meter violation from $8 to $10. Council, have any questions about that? Do I have an introduction? Rob and a second? Rich. Okay, that takes care of business. I want to remind you all to sign the various resolutions. Is there anything the council would like to bring up? Anything the council would like to bring up? That's new business? Anything from the people? Peter?
MOU that we discussed, is that on the agenda?
You're right, it was supposed to be in, I'm not sure why it's not. I did, thank you for reminding me.
Did it go to Tracy?
It did. My apologies, I should have followed up. It should have gone tonight, it was sent to the proper place. Yeah, we can still move forward next week. I'll make sure everybody gets it.
I actually can't be here next week. Would it be possible for me to introduce it tonight, even though it's not formally on the desk?
Explain to everyone what you're talking about.
Okay, I'm Peter Frank. And the memorandum that I thought was going to be presented tonight was a resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Friends of Hudson Youth. And I just wanted to give a little bit of background about the Friends of Hudson Youth and how we want to partner with the city. I got together with a really great group of people, some of whom, like Mark Bryant, who's here tonight, had very deep roots in Hudson, they spent their childhood at the Boys Club, and we got together to talk about how we could help the department. We did this because we feel very strongly about the Department of Youth. We feel it serves a vital role and a unique role in Hudson and helps a very underserved part of the community. We also feel that it needs to do a lot more to enrich the lives of our kids. Nick, who's been, it's his second year now, is director. He's been working tirelessly, he's done a lot to identify and address some critical issues, but the department has a long way to go to be the kind of place that we really want for our young people. And we're very grateful for all the tax dollars that the council allocates every year, and we know that the department gets a lot of support from the city. Mayor Rector has been very committed to the department this year, a number of people on the council, people throughout city government, we know are extremely supportive, and we certainly expect that the city will continue to support the department and will do more in the future to support the department. But the sad truth is that there's almost no public school or city youth department anywhere in the country that does a good job with public funding alone. In most cases, there's some kind of a PTA or booster club that really makes a difference. And in Hudson, the community that the youth department serves doesn't have the means to subsidize their kids' after-school programs or summer programs. But we feel that there are a lot of people in Hudson who do have the means and the desire to do that, and so that's where we fit in. And one of the issues that the youth department has come up against is that they can't legally raise money on their own. So in conversations with the city attorney and other people, I determined that the best thing was to form a nonprofit that could act as a conduit, that could raise money and then donate money. And our board has pledged to cover all of our operating expenses, so 100% of the money donated will be given to the city. None of the funds used will be for administrative costs or facilities, it'll all be to enrich existing programs or create new programs. The board will set guidelines for where the money's directed, that will be evaluated quarterly, and as we move forward, I would love to come back and give you information on what we've been able to accomplish through this. A lot of exciting things are already starting to happen. With the mayor's help, a boxing program is getting started very soon. There's a new music program starting in partnership with Kite's Nest. The kids will learn to DJ, to mix and record music. There's a bike clinic getting started this summer. There's a new after-school tutoring program, the Kamal is very instrumental, getting started. I'm sorry, he's not here tonight, that's in partnership with the Elks Club. But all these new initiatives, at this point are pilot programs, they're all going to need more funding to become firmly established and to expand in the future. And we hope to contribute to all of these programs in many ways. We are not quite ready at this point to make donations, but we wanted to enter into this memorandum to formalize our partnership with the city and to explain it to you, to entertain any questions, so that we can move forward with the resolution, perhaps next month or the month after. So I'm very excited about this, and I hope you are too.
I will make sure the MOU form and everything else go out tomorrow to all members that we can vote on that on the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your support. I have one question first, have you named your board yet?
Board's information, Mark Bryant is on our board, Joe Formicelli, Pat Malloy, Joan Koik, and Rosenthal, myself, and we are in the process of expanding.
Question. I wanted to ask also, what was the name of the group again?
Friends of Hudson Youth.
Friends of Hudson Youth?
Acre. We are, we have incorporated with New York State, and we have received our determination letter from the IRS, so we're a 501(c)(3).
Also, I wanted to just thank you for stepping up and doing this because we all know the youth department needs a lot of help, and you know, sometimes the kids are forgotten about it, and we want to keep encouraging our children and showing them support through these programs, through the youth department. So this is a beautiful thing, and I thank you for doing this. I wanted to also ask, with the board members that you named, are you all considering to take on any youth as board members?
Not as board members, no. But we will have.
Not only board members.
No. Our intention is to have program committees and to engage staff and youth and parents on committees and advisory roles, but there won't be any youth in, with fiduciary responsibility, if that's the right term.
Well, I understand that. Would they, would you ever have them, just to get a better understanding of what they need from the youth's mouths themselves?
Yes, yes, that's very important. A lot of that will come from Nick and the staff, and for instance, this music program that's starting, that's a direct result of requests from the kids, that this is something they really wanted to do. You know, things like the bike program, I mean, we all know that kids want bikes. So, yes, but you know, some of the things, I'm not sure all the kids want to do after school tutoring, but so, you know, but there will be a balance, and certainly what the kids want is very important to us.
And last question, will you all create a relationship with the school district so that way you would know which kids that need that tutoring? Perhaps they are not informed about the youth department, they could be new students to the area. Will you all create that relationship as well?
We're not administering the programs, so the youth department is administering the program, so I would hope, for instance, in the program that the Elks and Kamal are doing, they partnered with all the coaches, so all the coaches are requiring kids to, correct me if I'm wrong about this.
I can talk a little bit more about it. Yeah, because we did the first day today of this program, it's pretty exciting. This spring is going to be the test run of this program. The big issue that we've had at the youth center with after-school help is when 30 kids run in after school, it's very hard to turn that into an environment that's conducive with sitting down and quietly doing homework, because they've just been in school for that many hours. And so the big issue is really space. And so what this partnership is going to allow is for us to move this program and develop this program off-site in kind of the ideal place for it, the Elks Lodge, which is right next to the junior high and the senior high. So they were really amazing to offer this to us, and they're also offering as a part of it, a hot meal. So they're actually going to open up their kitchen, cook a meal. This spring it's going to be three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and as a test kind of program, we're going to do this spring with our traveling basketball teams, so we can get some buy-in from the coaches. They've all said, "If you're failing, at risk of failing, you got to show up," so whatever it's going to be, two or three days of this tutoring, whenever you can. Elks providing their part, we're providing staff, Kamal's organization, the mentor program is providing some of the tutors, and so so far it's great. We actually had the first day today, and I was actually really nervous, I went early and I said, "Look, I know you guys got all set up here, but I think there's a good chance the kids aren't going to show up, but we can at least have a planning thing." And so we kind of went over what would happen. And then four kids turned the corner from walking down the street and they walked in. So we had our first session today, but we are, and I went to the school today and I talked directly with the guidance counselors of the junior high and the assistant principals, and so it's all going to be in communication with them. And this will be kind of a smaller test program, but the goal is to be able to have it be larger and expand past the youth center, whoever else, so that any student in need can be able to access it.
One last question.
Yeah.
You mentioned the traveling basketball teams, which that include both girls and boys basketball?
Yeah, we talked about that today. Yeah, definitely. And I also just want to say how excited we are and how thankful from everybody at the youth department and all the youth of what Peter has been doing and Mark and the whole rest of the board, and just to acknowledge quickly, he said it in passing, but this whole thing started in January, really in February it got going. For us to, for them to already have the papers of incorporation from the IRS in two months is almost unheard of, and that I think goes back to all the work and amazing ability that Peter Frank has, so we're very excited.
Hey, oh, Rich, one more thing.
No, it is really great, it's really important, and like we learned during the polar plunge, that you need a 501(c)(3) for people to make certain types of donations.
Exactly.
Donations cannot be made directly to municipal organizations, so even just little things like setting up software to accept, you know, donations such as that, you need a 501(c)(3). What I also learned this week as well is that there are certain companies, certain organizations here in the city of Hudson that give employees certain volunteer time and credit. So, and those volunteer time and credit I learned, it only go to certain 501(c)(3)'s. So it's not only a matter of money, but time as well that people can donate. So it is, it's a combination of both, and having that as like a shell or outside of a separate organization enables those time and money to be contributed, so it's very important.
Right, like an organization like Etsy does that, and they could donate the time to the Friends of Hudson Youth, and they could go to the Friends of Hudson Youth three hours a week, and they could go to the youth department three hours a week.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
But right now, it's more complicated.
Exactly.
Peter, I got a question too. This also gives you an opportunity to go for grants too, using 501, or is this going to be basically soliciting?
We can, we're, you know, we're taking it one step at a time. So the first step is individual contributions, but yes, we can apply for grants, absolutely.
Well, I think you have selected a very fine board, you have some heavy hitters that have some long-time ties to the community, so I would definitely wish you guys well.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else? Any more comments? Thank you very much, Peter. Any more comments from the public? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Rob, second? Comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?